Good evening, everyone. Welcome to this January 28, 2019, meeting of the West Orange Board of Education here at West Orange High School. We're going to start with the Pledge of Allegiance. Mr. Calabana?
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Constitution of which stands the Constitution of the Constitution of Justice.
All right. We're going to begin with minutes. We're going to make one change and remove the closed minutes from the 12th of December from the first motion for the first item, item six. So I need a motion for item six, consideration of the closed meeting minutes of December 11th only, and the public meeting minutes of December 11th and 17th.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
All right. Mr. Calabana?
Mrs. Merklinger?
I abstain.
Mr. Robertson?
Yes.
Mrs. Trigsscales?
Abstain.
Vice President Mordecai?
Yes, except for December 12th, as I wasn't in attendance.
We struck that one. Yep, exactly.
So it's yes then, right?
Yes.
And President Alper?
Yes.
All right. Next, we need a motion for the consideration of the closed minutes and the public minutes of January 7th. Can I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
All right. Mr. Calabana?
Mrs. Merklinger?
Yes.
Mr. Robertson?
Yes.
Mrs. Trigsscales?
Yes.
Vice President Mordecai?
Yes.
President Alper?
Yes.
Okay. Next up on the agenda is our student reports. Take it away.
So last week, we met with Ms. Dementes to go over some things that we had on our own agenda, with things we were asking about. We talked about bus transportation and hopefully that the bus transportation, the ABL program system and all that, hopefully that will soon come to fruit. We're going to keep asking you about that and keep tabs on that.
We also met and talked about delayed school days. So after we got off the phone with Ms. Dementes, we kind of made a list of the effects of pushing school time back 15 minutes and then half an hour. So we can put that on a document and then show it next meeting or share it. And then Black History Month Scholarship Dinner is on Friday, and we already know Ms. Dementes will be attending. And we have flyers for the board members. Oh, also, Cecina and I will be attending the annual breakfast of the Chamber of Commerce on February 6th. I think it starts at 7:45.
Great. Thank you. Ms. Dementes, anything before your report?
Good evening. So, yes, the ladies and I met. It was a very good conversation. We also met after our conversation with the transportation company that we work with, ESC, and our own transportation company. We did ask them to give us different scenarios of what the impact would be to transportation. We thought to begin there because that would probably be the biggest impact. And so, once they provide to us various scenarios, we can analyze those and then return back to our conversation. And this is specifically dealing with the idea of a delayed opening for the high school.
Okay, great. Board members, anything? Okay. We're going to move on to the superintendent report.
So I'm going to begin with the ELA program update. I'm going to ask Elizabeth Veneziano, our Acting Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum, and Denise Di Martinez, the Supervisor of Elementary ELA, to come to present and if the board would sit in the audience.
John. I thought senior two was first. Sorry about that. This goes first. Clicker or... I don't know. It's too loud.
My name is Liz Veneziano. I'm currently the ELA Supervisor for grades 6 through 12, but I'm also the Acting Assistant Superintendent. And this is Denise Di Martinez. She is the ELA Supervisor for K-5. So collectively, we oversee the K-12 program. And we're just here tonight to give you an update on our work to date with the K-12 ELA Language Arts Program in West Orange schools. So Denise and I joined the West Orange team about four years ago. And over the course of those four years, we've conducted needs assessments with the teachers. We reviewed the existing program. We have added text. We've revised curriculum to ensure compliance to the most current standards, as well as create a more user-friendly, living curriculum that aligns with an integrated approach to literacy, which is the balanced literacy approach that we practice in our elementary grades, and a standards-based ELA approach in the middle and high school grades. So to date, we have updated just about all of our ELA curricula to align with the district's understanding by design format, to ensure our curriculum focuses on building deep understandings of the content and the ability to transfer those understandings beyond the ELA classroom. So therefore, we wanted to assess the current program. We want to see where we are, areas of strength, areas in need of improvement, and to develop a systematic process to continue to move forward. To do this, we've established an overall goal of our program to achieve a comprehensive and cohesive K-12 ELA program that ensures all students are meeting the expectations of the New Jersey Student Learning Standards. So in order to meet our overall goal, we are systematically examining the program through three established goals. Number one, an evaluation committee. Number two, continued curriculum development. And number three, professional development. The purpose of the committee is to evaluate our current instructional materials, our units to date, assessments included in our curriculum units and student work, to ensure a comprehensive and cohesive program. Secondly, we are in our last phase of curriculum develop aligned to the new UBD design, and therefore, we want to ensure that we are aligning the curriculum to the established balanced literacy approach at the elementary schools, and that the curriculum includes grade-level mentor texts to target teaching points. Lastly, we are continuing to provide teachers to gain a deep understanding of the balanced literacy approach, specifically the pillars of reading instruction, the writing process, and how the teaching of reading and writing should look within the balanced literacy model at each grade level in the elementary grades. So for our first goal, in September of this year, a K-12 ELA Evaluation Committee was established. Committee members consist of general education and special education teachers and reading specialists representative of each grade level and school, as well as administrators from each grade band. So our goal of our committee is to evaluate the K-12 ELA program in the areas of instructional materials, curriculum units, assessment, and student work in order to achieve a comprehensive and cohesive K-12 program that ensures all students are meeting the expectations of our current standards. The main purpose of the K-12 ELA Evaluation Committee is to evaluate the district-provided instructional materials. To do this, the committee is using the Instructional Materials Evaluation Tool, or IMET. It's the same tool, but the language arts version that the math committee used last year during their work. And that tool is developed by Student Achievement Partners. Student Achievement Partners was founded by three of the lead authors of the Common Core Standards. The founding partners formed the organization to address the need for practical evidence-based support for teachers and school leaders making game-changing shifts to align their instructional materials and assessments to the Common Core Standards, for us, now the New Jersey Learning Standards, and practice to college and career-ready standards. So through the use of the IMET, along with additional evaluation tools provided by and/or endorsed by the Student Achievement Partners, the committee is currently evaluating district-provided instructional materials, units, assessments, and student work for alignment to the shifts in the current standards. Those shifts are number one, to ensure a range of text complexity in each grade. Number two, student application and analysis of text evidence through questions, tasks, and assignments provided. And number three, the building of knowledge through informational texts. Throughout this process, the committee will also evaluate the consistency of these instructional materials across each school and grade level. During our work to date, the committee has already identified that there is an inconsistency in mentor text used to teach targeted teaching points in K-5. So therefore, we are already able to begin to address this as we are developing the K-3 ELA curriculum this year. In addition to evaluating all of these components, while the committee is examining actual specific curricular units, they will also audit current texts provided in regards to diversity and variety of genre, because we want to ensure that our curriculum includes mirror texts or texts in which students can see themselves, and also window texts, texts in which students can learn about others through a variety of genres in each grade level. At the end of our work, the committee will evaluate the findings, determine priorities and recommendations, much like the math committee had done last year, and will communicate the committee findings and recommendations to the board and public at the end of the school year. For each goal, the Evaluation Committee, the Curriculum Development, and Professional Development, the latter of the two Denise will speak to, we have developed action plans that are being completed as we move through the process. These action plans have been communicated to the ELA Evaluation Committee, as the committee serves as our foundation. Action plans have also been shared with principals and the Curriculum Council to ensure key stakeholders are informed. Updates and action plans will also be shared with teachers to promote transparency, communication, and provide opportunities for feedback. Each action plan includes major activities, resources, timeline, and findings or outcomes. The action plan for the ELA Evaluation Committee includes each meeting date, the focus of the meeting, resources used, and our findings to date. To date, the committee has found in regards to the shifts in the English Language Arts Standards, number one, text complexity. Current texts in each grade level range in grade-level appropriate complexity and building complexity over the course of the school year. However, like I said before, the committee found that during this work, there is an inconsistency of anchor texts available to each teacher in each grade level across the seven elementary schools in grades K through 5. So therefore, all teachers -- excuse me -- must have access to anchor texts listed in curriculum for direct instruction. Number two, evidence, questions, tasks, and assignments aligned to current anchor texts are text-dependent and text-specific, and therefore require students to elicit evidence from text. I apologize. I'm getting over laryngitis, and it's coming back. I have one. I'm almost finished with my part. Okay, so for evidence, we talked about questions, tasks, and assignments aligned to current anchor texts are text-dependent and text-specific. In regards to building knowledge, additional materials are provided to build knowledge of topics and academic vocabulary, yet more materials can be built in to increase consistency across grade levels. Also, independent reading in each grade level, K-8, also provides students to build knowledge outside of text read in the class. And independent reading in grades 12 is currently inconsistent. Foundational reading, the K-2 Foundations Program provides a comprehensive and systematic approach to building foundational reading skills in the early grades. In addition, findings outside of the IMET and ELA shifts, the committee noted, number one, a need for a more cohesive and consistent approach to grammar instruction, specifically in the area of an instructional resource. And number two, a more consistent and common understanding of grade-level writing expectations.
Good evening. Before I begin to speak to the curriculum development work, I would just like to thank the teachers involved in our ELA Evaluation Committee and curriculum development. It is their time, expertise, and feedback that allows us to move forward and work together in this systematic process. Approximately four to four and a half years ago, the K-3 curriculum was developed to align with a balanced literacy approach. Currently, our curriculum model has transferred to UBD, Understanding by Design Framework. This year, a committee of curriculum writers, 10 teachers representative of our seven elementary buildings, are diligently working to develop curriculum aligned to the New Jersey Student Learning Standards and balanced literacy approach to ensure consistent use of mentor texts to target teaching points in reading, writing -- excuse me, reading, writing, language, and speaking, and listening across all grade levels. Our objectives include strategic points and mini lessons aligned to specific mentor texts for each unit. Align curriculum to research-based resources and provide those resources to all teachers across grade levels to ensure consistency and rigor and depth of content aligned to the balanced literacy approach. To develop guidance in the systematic instruction of language and academic vocabulary. And expand resources that ensure representation of the diversity of the West Orange student body and variety of genre. As the teachers are in the process of writing the newly revised curriculum, they are utilizing vetted, research-based, standard-aligned units of study as a resource to align with our existing current model of balanced literacy. The units of study are resources to help teachers build specific teaching points and targeted mini lessons, along with focused grammar instruction built into the reading and writing units of study with the use of real authentic texts. Shared reading, interactive read-alouds, small group instruction, mini lessons in writer's workshop, writing conferences, peer editing, and the writing process allows for extensive opportunities for embedded authentic grammar instruction. When students hear and see, read as a writer, write as a reader, students incorporate their language development into their own writing. Therefore, extensive opportunities to read and write in the classroom is imperative and must be embedded in the written curriculum. To highlight some key outcomes of the action plan, curriculum writers engaged in vertical articulation to develop scope and pacing of units to ensure consistency across grade-level curriculum. Writers are unpacking the units of study as an instructional resource to build in teaching points, mini lessons, with corresponding mentor texts in reading, writing, language, and speaking, and listening. In June, a walkthrough of the newly revised curriculum units will be communicated to all K-3 staff. To ensure the curriculum is implemented effectively, teachers need support and adequate professional development to gain a deeper understanding of the approaches and instructional strategies of pillars of reading instruction, components of balanced literacy, types of writing, steps of the writing process, and structures of readers' and writers' workshop. Our objectives, to develop knowledge and understanding of current literacy best practices and the curriculum, and resources needed to access and implement them effectively. Gain better understanding of components of balanced literacy, pillars of reading instruction, structures of readers' workshop, narrative opinion, informative writing process, structures of writers' workshop, and model lessons. Leverage lessons in order to facilitate components of balanced literacy that foster fluency, stamina, comprehension, and independence. Our professional development has begun. We began with the kindergarten and grade-one general ed teachers, special ed, BSI, reading specialists, and ESL. And the teachers had a focus on reading instruction, highlighting some of the outcomes in the action plan as follows. Understanding the pillars of reading. Building common knowledge and language of components of balanced literacy. Providing demo lessons modeling read-aloud with accountable talk and mini lessons. Understanding the characteristics of level texts and expectations for small group instruction. Offering useful and practical teaching strategies to implement with the time provided in the literacy block for our diverse learners. Dates are listed on the action plan for professional development for grades 2 to 5. In the spring, all grade-level teachers will focus on writing instruction to include structures of writers' workshop, the writing process, and demo lessons. The work and the findings of the ELA Evaluation Committee, the curriculum development, and the professional development provided to all staff will better support our teachers and serve our students in meeting the expectations of the New Jersey Student Learning Standards across all grade levels, and equitable opportunities for all students in reading, writing, language, and speaking, and listening.
So here we have our intended completion dates for each of our goal areas, and we will return at the end of the school year with findings and recommendations to share. Once again, we would like to thank the teachers and administrators on the ELA Evaluation Committee, as well as the teachers working tirelessly on the curriculum development. Through the team approach, we are working together to build a comprehensive and cohesive K-12 ELA program. We also want to thank all of the teachers who have attended and will be attending the grade-level professional development. We know that how hard it is to leave the classroom for the day. However, the feedback we have received on the opportunities to continue learning collaboratively among colleagues has been well worth it. So to conclude, this is just an update of our work to date. The Evaluation Committee is evaluating the current program and making recommendations to further enhance our program. The curriculum development is revising our current K-3 curriculum to the newly designed format while simultaneously building in more specific teaching points and guidance for teachers, so they have an easy-to-read, user-friendly roadmap to help them navigate the teaching of English Language Arts and transfer of learning in the balanced literacy block. And the professional development is to provide K-5 teachers an even stronger foundation of effective reading and writing instruction. So thank you, and we will return in June with our updates.
All right. We'll take questions from the board on this. Uh, Ms. Scales, if you'd like to begin?
That was wonderful. I've done this in a prior life, so I know what this is all about. I'm going to defer questions for right now.
Sure. Thank you. I have a couple of questions. First of all, thank you for all your hard work, and thanks to everybody in the committee. I just want some clarification. You use K-3 and K-5 interchangeably. Were there any fourth or fifth-grade teachers on the committee?
There are, on the Evaluation Committee, there are K-12 teachers representative of general, special ed, reading specialist administrators, representative of all grade levels and each building.
And that was going to be my next question. I wanted to make sure there were special ed teachers on the committee, as well as BSI teachers.
Yes.
Let's see. During the presentation, you mentioned the diversity of West Orange. I just want to make sure that the curriculum is Amistad compliant. Nowhere in the presentation it mentioned the phrase "Amistad," so I just want to make sure that you are looking at that.
Currently, in each of our curriculum units, we link directly to the New Jersey Department of Education Amistad site and resources. Currently, on the DOE site, the Amistad only has a list of texts specifically for primary grades, which Denise has already done, I believe about two years ago. She went through the Amistad list in comparison to what we have within the district with the reading specialists. So we have an aligned list. It's a little outdated. However, on the more updated New Jersey Amistad site, they do list under the New Jersey Student Learning Standards, literature and informational resources, many of them which we already have. And then again, once we do our audits and we're looking to add, we will use Amistad as one of our references, as well as we need diverse texts, as well as the Children's Book Council on Diversity and Teaching Tolerance, to make sure that we're covering those parameters when we're infusing more diverse texts.
Okay. And my last question is, how often do the committees meet together? You have the Evaluation Committee, the Curriculum Council. Is there a joint committee at the end, so that you can get feedback to make sure that there's vertical articulation, K through 12? Because I remember a teacher making a comment in, I think it was sixth grade, once to me, saying that you can tell which elementary school a kid came from based on their level. So I want to make sure that there's consistency across grade levels.
Well, the Evaluation Committee is representative of K-12. They are doing the large amount of the work in looking at the evaluating of the program as a whole. So that has K-12 representation. The Curriculum Development is specifically for curriculum development. Those teachers, there's 10 teachers on that committee representative K-3 of all the schools as well.
And at some point, there's a joint meeting of everyone, just to make sure everyone's on the same page?
Not of all of the committees together, because the curriculum development is separate from the Evaluation Committee.
I understand that.
But the Evaluation Committee does look at the curriculum units and evaluate them against the approved...
Okay. It'd be great to have a conversation together, just to make sure...
Absolutely.
Everyone's on the same page.
Thank you. That's all I have.
Mr. Robertson?
Thank you. Thanks for all the hard work and for the update, and thanks to the committees. Couple of things. Did you include, in your evaluation of the programs, did you include -- you know, I have a 12th grader who went through honors in middle school and then was in IMS, okay? And I have a 7th grader now at Liberty. Did you include any parent or student feedback as part of the data you looked at?
Not at this time, because we, the committee, is still new. We've just established in September, and we want to get through evaluating all of our instructional materials first. What I do foresee is that the committee, the Evaluation Committee, will continue their work next year. And once we have findings, and then that's a point where we will bring parents in, we will do faculty surveys. But right now, in the beginning of our work, we're just getting through the initial stages of looking at our current instructional materials. I think once we have our findings, we can send feedback out to parents and students and teachers to get their input on priorities and then plan from there. But much like the math committee, I foresee it going into a second and perhaps a third year to make sure that we're moving forward, and then we can bring other areas on.
For this, as well as with other areas, it probably wouldn't hurt to have some sort of exit survey as each class, you know, graduates. And I say this because, let's start with grammar. First of all, I'm ecstatic to hear that you're taking a focused grammar instruction approach, In my children's experience and in the feedback I've gotten from numerous parents, including parents of very high-performing students, right? Our grammar has been woefully inadequate. And I understand that we're teaching it in terms of it being authentic and embedded within the text. That's wonderful. But I would, I'll use the analogy that right now, we teach grammar -- could you imagine learning how to drive by simply an authentic experience without knowing the rules of the road? Their accidents are inevitable. Their accidents are inevitable, and I, and that's what we see happening. Some of your teachers, I'm not going to mention names, of course, have even brought in their own grammar textbooks to try to address the issues. Grammar has been terrible. And part of it is the failure to really teach, we don't teach English grammar with the same discipline that we teach grammar and syntax and structure for world language. And it's, it's, the results of it are showing. So it would help if the, the, the kids really understood rules, structure, syntax, and, and then, oh, then within the text, this is how it's applied. Oh, and then, this is how I can actually write it. Because right now, there's a terrible disconnect. And it goes all the way up into, into high school where teachers are then trying to do, you know, triage on papers because the grammar is not there. How to, how to use a comma appropriately and consistently, I mean, basic things. So that's, that's a huge, huge concern for me still, and it has been for years. I know you've heard this before, right? Second, I do think that I've seen vocabulary instruction improve. I still feel that our vocabulary instruction, even though we're, we're looking for it within context, and we do also have lists of vocabulary for kids to learn, you know, I would still like to see greater, a little greater depth and complexity in that. And I'm saying that comparing it to the various vocabulary online programs and books that, that I've reviewed, you know, by age, and some I use with my own kids. That's an area I, I still have a great concern. And last but not least, I understand that the, in applying the New Jersey State standards, which is really just a new label on what has been the common core. I understand that, that the approach of, you want to elicit evidence from text. You want them to be able to sift through and, and pick out and understand, ah, this supports this, this supports this, this is where this was found. And then to also, from a writing standpoint, to be able to support a particular argument or approach in the same manner. So they, they read it, and then they reflect it in writing. I get that. Here's where I see a huge disconnect. And I'm, and I've looked at other school systems, top performing school systems in the country like Howard County Schools. The content of the reading list, while I understand the need to focus on histories and biographies that are fact-driven and, and in trying to develop this critical thinking, we're missing, we're undermining our kids' education by failing to give them sufficient works of fiction. In fact, first of all, just failing to have them read enough books. In middle school and elementary school, there may be, they may read a book every, you know, may take one to two months to finish a book. And they're, and, and that's even in combining, and I like the Readers-Writers Workshop in theory, you know, having the, the, the book clubs and, and where you can group kids on the basis of, of where they are in their development. You have the book clubs, you have the independent reading, you have the close reading, and I get that. But we are missing, and I'll use middle school as, as a prime example. Starting back in 2014, I was asking for our reading list, and I would like to see that again. And I actually pulled reading list from top-performing public schools in different parts of the country and from private schools. And when I compared them side by side, I found that ours was, once again, it's feel inadequate. And, and let me give specific examples. And it also, you know, some teachers were also recognizing this too. So when my son was in, in Liberty, his teachers, he was at honors, but his teachers really helped to address this. So he got to read The Hobbit in sixth grade and do a report on it. He got to read To Kill a Mockingbird and did a report on that in either seventh or eighth, I think it was eighth grade. And that's heavy stuff, right? But, you know, I looked, as I looked at other school systems, public and private, I was seeing even some works of Shakespeare. I was seeing Steinbeck. From a diversity standpoint, Achebe, Morrison, I was seeing really meaty, really substantive works of literature and poetry. And when I think about our, our kids, teaching our kids critical thinking and evidence-based, that evidence-based can still be within the context of, what did this character in fiction, what, what did their actions do? What were the implications or results of their actions? What do you see as the evidence for their motivation to do it? It can still be evidence-based, but it can get into rich literature, you know, Twain, Steinbeck, Dickens. And I'm not seeing that in our content. And I am seeing it in some other school systems. I'll use Howard County again as an example. So that, that's a deep concern to me. And additionally, looking at something that was promised years ago and was initially part of our plan, teaching kids, and unfortunately, part of the plan at that time was to do it for honors, but it should be done for all kids, teaching children Latin and Greek roots so that they can decipher words, they can dissect language and understanding. This is being done in other top-performing public school systems, and not just for the kids in honors, for all children, so that they can see, you know, oh, confluence, there are con with or among, and fluence, flow, oh, this came from the Latin for this, this came. They can be able to dissect a word or dissect words and that they're countering for the first time, whether it's on, whether it's in the text that they're reading in the books you give them or in standardized works. I'd like to know what happened with that? Where are we on that? So please address fiction, novels, and poetry, and, and, and please address what happened with teaching Latin and Greek roots to help them dissect literature, dissect words.
Well, I can send you all forward to Mr. Mendez, our reading list for six through 12. We have lists of fictions, many of the authors, Steinbeck, Dickens, Achebe, those of you, Morrison, who we have noted, we read them. So I will forward you the lists as well. Since Denise and I have come on board, we have added a lot of titles, book clubs, as well as student independent reading where they have choice to read in addition to what they read in class. And as far as the Latin and Greek roots that is outlined in each grade level of the language standards, and so that is written into the curriculum. Again, we need a resource. The, the teachers really need a resource and able to make sure that they're teaching grammar effectively. We do use Get to the Root as a resource. However, it's inconsistent within the grade level, so there's a, a big push and use for that at the sixth grade level. So that's part of the committee work to really reach out to the sixth grade teachers and to look at the effectiveness on the Get to the Root and see if it's able to be extended throughout other grades.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
So I just want to thank you for your presentation.
You're welcome.
I'll just keep my comments short in the interest of time. I know Sandra and Mark gave you a lot to, to look into, so I look forward to hearing your update in, at the end of the school year.
Okay, thank you.
Come back to you. You deferred.
I deferred, yes. A little bit of what Mr. Robertson said about the reading list and the authentic literature. And I'm pretty sure that you're doing that, right? Right. So you talked about six through 12. So if you could share with us, in Readers Workshop, what are, what are the students reading, say, three through five? I'd be interested to see what that is as well. And your two areas that you talked about, the grammar and the grade level writing expectations. Way to go. Very good. Thank you.
I'm good. I think we had a good sense of everything. I really appreciate the work you put into that. Thank you.
I have a question.
Let's just have a couple of comments.
Yeah. So I know you mentioned, I don't remember exactly who you mentioned, but that you don't really have certain input in your, in any prior committees. But we have a certain student input, student response that was given to one of our, for surveys on our website. It was a student, an ESL student, and was placed in a regular English class in the high school. And they were complaining of having trouble catching up and keeping up with the other native speakers in the class. And they complained that they had put in sometimes five to six hours into essays only to get a failing grade. And they were having trouble understanding common English conventions and understanding of grammar and kind of the control of grammar. So I basically want to ask if there's any, I don't know, was, was it mentioned in any of the, in the report? I don't know exactly all the details of the English curriculum, especially for six to 12. I mentioned, I think, I'm assuming Ms. Venesiano, you're in charge of six to 12, you're overseeing? Yeah. If there's any, any kind of accommodations for a transition between an ESL curriculum or ESL English class to a regular English class? And if there's like, if there is or if there can be any kind of separate rubric or standard or specific, like specific evaluation of students that are trying to compete and keep up with other students that may have been speaking English since they were born, whereas some of these students are arriving. And you may know, West Orange has a lot of ESL students and students that are learning English for the first time, even in high school. And I, we even learned in our site class that students after age of seven have trapped, like they, it's basically impossible to master a language after age seven. So we took it upon ourselves, this is a, a response that we got back in November. We didn't, we just didn't know who to speak to. I'm glad now we have this chance to speak to you directly. We talked to our Scriptus National English Honor Society here in our high school, and we worked with them to organize and possibly provide peer tutoring for students as well, maybe just some peer review to look over essays and things like that.
We also had an idea with the Scriptus to, instead of just abandoning ESL students' first language, we could get students to go down, Scriptus students to go down to the elementary schools and kind of whoever is bilingual could read to bilingual younger kids so that they still maintain that first language and it's not difficult, like the transition isn't as difficult.
Just to speak on that for a little bit, I know I personally grew up reading a lot, and I would read books, and that helped me develop my English. I was, I myself am an ESL student, and reading a lot, especially from the age of even like five to seven, helped me develop my English vocabulary, conventions, grammar. I grasp that quickly. So I also want to push on that, maybe even if it's not learning, it's reading in English, maybe reading a different language also helps. That just boosts the ability to understand language. And there was even, I think there's a study being conducted at Vanderbilt University right now. It's a grad student project going on. They have a project called Translate. They don't have results yet. This project is, I think it's a three-year project until 2021, but they're trying to figure a way to incorporate a native language and English. And instead of, yeah, once, like she said, abandoning the native language, you try to incorporate the native language into understanding of English language. So I'm not really sure how that's helpful, but that's just something that's being looked into, and I think that's might be, and they, this preliminary results have shown that's a little bit more, it's more effective in grasping English conventions. I just wanted to give a little comment as well about, I'm sure it's different now, but when I myself was in fifth grade, now I'm a 12th grader, I remember we used to get, like, literal formula sheets for writing, like we would plug in author name here, plug in the title of the piece here, and just plug in a theme and just continue with it. And now in high school, it's easier to see which students were simply like regurgitating some terms or phrases or form, like those kind of formulas, and then some which students are grasping and can have, can manipulate English conventions and English grammar rules to provide and, I guess, communicate their ideas. So hopefully, I'm hopeful that that's being looked into and also even starting at the age of, I know there was a lot of talk about K-3 and K-5, so hopefully at that age to not, not just simply look and use formulas, but to produce authentic and original ideas too.
And then one last comment in regards to Mr. Robertson's comment about learning Latin and Greek word roots. So Sissina and I take med term this year, and even though it's not English, it's, it's really helpful. We're science students, so, science-based students. So I know in biology, in AP Biology and AP Psych, learning med term has definitely helped me understand terms that I learned in bio and psych. And so, and those are Latin and Greek roots. So I think it would be really helpful learning at younger levels.
Absolutely.
And I know even in eighth grade, sorry, going from eighth grade science to ninth grade biology, my teacher, she had give, she had pulled some students aside, my eighth grade teacher, the late Mr. Carroll, and she had given us a list of Latin and Greek roots to tell us, oh, study these, they'll help you. And actually, it really did help me. Like I learned certain phrases faster, it was easier to understand concepts. So that's just our little testimony.
And my father, as a former Latin teacher, will be thanking you, so. I, I grew up with learning all of the roots, and, and so definitely, I understand. And I thank you for your input. I'm more than willing to work with Ms. Harvath and Ms. Wachtel regarding a Scriptus. We also, we have a peer tutoring already where we have high school students working with elementary, so we can certainly add the ESL component. I do work closely, we do work closely with the World Language and ESL Supervisor, and since his coming on to the district, we have been working to really pay attention to the ESL program and see how we can blend the two programs to create a more cohesive program, especially transitions with the, with the students. And currently, we have ESL push-in for our 11th and 12th grade where ESL students that are currently transitioned out of Level 5 have additional support within their English 11 and English 12. And I believe that based on the numbers, there will be a need, and we will have the push-in for English 9 through 12 next year. If, where we did have that conversation, the data still stands. So there will be support. It also, we really need to work with the school counselors to make sure that the students are appropriately placed within those supportive environments. We have an excellent ESL push-in teacher up here who's also an English, certified in English teacher, so she works really well with the English teachers. And I think you bring up a really good point of English language learners, and therefore, when we approach grammar with those students who maybe their English is not the language that is spoken at home, they were not raised speaking English as their first language, we have to be very careful in how we approach grammar because if we move towards that skill and drill, that will not be beneficial to them because we have to really see where they are. And in addition, with our ESL students, we do work with teachers depending upon where the students are coming out of their ESL placement. And accommodations can be made to the rubric, especially in that grammar piece, to be a little bit more open, especially because they are coming from an English as a second language background. So I would really appreciate your feedback. And again, more than willing, if you want to reach out, Ms. Harvath and Ms. Wachtel, we can touch base and follow up with a couple of your ideas. Thank you. You're welcome.
Thank you.
Okay.
I'd like to thank Ms. Venesiano and Ms. Martinez for their presentation, but especially our board liaisons. I am so consistently impressed by your ability to engage in, in academic conversation at the skill and at the level that you do, both of you. You know, keep pressing on, and you say you're a science background, but I hear you all in yourself all through that. But again, I'm just very impressed. And just continue to be confident in your conversations, right? Be confident. You are giving valuable information. You are sharing absolutely critical information that helps inform us in our decision-making. So just be, again, confident in your statements. Know that you are contributing at a very high level and that we're listening, okay? Absolutely. Wonderful. That's nice leadership. All right, so thank you to the ladies, thank you to the leadership in your area as well, and to the committee work, and to the teachers. They definitely are pulling together to give us some very honest feedback about our program. We appreciate that, and we appreciate the safety that you're providing to them to do so. All right. Next, we're going to have a presentation by our AHRRA consultant regarding carbon dioxide, John Smoyer. He's going to speak with us this evening about the tests that have been conducted in the district. I just want to clarify, this report is about carbon dioxide. It's what we're breathing in and out. It's not carbon monoxide, which is very toxic, all right? And he will share with us the results, some overviews of what we are experiencing in our district, and then some next steps.
Well, thank you all. I've been asked to give a presentation on carbon dioxide to help alleviate recent concerns of parents and/or staff members. And I'm honored to follow those student liaisons. Really, I am. The girls are amazing. Yes. Well, carbon dioxide is a gas that is exhaled as human and as a result of human respiration. It is often measured in indoor air quality evaluations because it is an indicator gas that demonstrates good outside air exchanges. Carbon dioxide is harmful when its concentration is high enough to displace the oxygen in the air. Carbon dioxide in itself is not toxic. Symptoms of elevated carbon dioxide levels include headaches, nausea, drowsiness, and an increased heart rate. CO2 in outdoor CO2 in outdoor air can range anywhere from 300 to 500 parts per million. 350 to 1,000 parts per million of CO2 is typical for most buildings. Levels of 1,000 to 2,000 parts per million can be a level associated with drowsiness and levels from 2,000 to 5,000 parts per million occupants may experience headaches and sleepiness. Greater than 5,000 parts per million can lead to oxygen deprivation symptoms. Initially, the district brought a HARA consultants in to conduct carbon dioxide, carbon monoxide, relative humidity, and temperature readings of the ambient air throughout the West Orange High School. Subsequently, the district requested further testing in the middle schools and elementary schools as a proactive measure to assess air exchanges within those spaces also. Our focus today is on carbon dioxide because the other items that we tested all were in well within normal ranges, as was carbon dioxide also, but this is the lead. There are regulatory levels for carbon dioxide. New Jersey PO states that if carbon dioxide levels exceed 1,000 parts per million, the employer is required to ensure that the systems are operating as designed. There is no requirement for the employer to modify and/or upgrade existing systems to achieve this range. There are also federal guidelines, OSHA's permissible exposure level of 5,000 parts per million over a time-weighted average. NIOSH is recommended, exposure level is not to exceed 5,000. NIOSH's short-term exposure limit is 30,000 parts per million and immediately dangerous life and health conditions of 50,000 parts per million. Further investigation was done, which we've conducted, since there are spaces within several of the buildings that had levels in excess of 1,000 parts per million, assessments of the mechanics, mechanical systems are underway. In no, in none of the testing that we conducted, did we recently, did we achieve anything close to even 3,000? That was the up, the upper limit was actually, I think, 2,400 at the, the one test and one of the tests. The HVAC professionals, building maintenance, and engineers can work together to investigate approaches to lower these levels within any of the affected spaces. An example that we found that we encountered while we were out there, several rooms at one of the buildings had univentilator obstructions observed during the survey. Three classrooms within a building had exterior univentilator grates obstructed by plywood that appears to have been installed many years ago. Simply removing this may alleviate the high CO2 levels that were found in those spaces. Possible causes can be as simple as univentilator dampers set in the closed position or books and/or classroom materials that may be obstructing their blower vents. All of these items are being looked into at this time. Ventilation is the key to solving or reducing concentrations. Many older buildings did not have HVAC systems, univentilators, or air conditioning units or et cetera, they were not built with those originally or designed with those. Air exchanges within older buildings were often achieved with the use of ventilation shafts and operable windows. New Jersey PO requires that the employer, employer ensure proper operation of windows if present and that vents are not blocked. Simply introducing fresh air by opening windows and/or interior doors can dilute concentrations, thus decrease in CO2 levels within that space. It's important to maintain balance between room temperature, comfort, and the outdoor air that may be introduced with this method. With the help of room occupants, this can be achieved. One of the, one of the concerns that people have that often gets mentioned to us is that if you're going to open a window in my room, Johnny is going to get sick. Well, as contrary to popular belief, colds are not caused by cold. Germs and, in order, viruses and bacterias cause sickness. Below is a direct quote from the Health, from Health Link. "Colds are caused by rhinoviruses which spread like other pathogens." In other words, contact with infected people or bodily fluids and don't thrive in cold air. In fact, exposure to cold weather is actually shown to boost infection-fighting white blood cells. That's, that's my presentation for some? Thank you very much. No, no, and has more to do with engineering. One of the questions that was just asked was whether or not buying additional air conditioners are, would be something that could solve the problem or help. It's actually the introduction, introduction of fresh air into a space to dilute concentrations because the dumping effect happens when you overpopulate a space. If there are too many humans, then the concentrations of carbon dioxide increase within that space without the proper balance. So sometimes, especially in older buildings that weren't designed to be enclosed, when you enclose a building and turn on an air conditioner, sometimes the damper is of the air conditioner does not allow enough fresh air to be mixed in to that air, thus it really doesn't do anything except chill the air.
Interesting. Actually, we'll take questions from the board on this, we'll start with Ms. Scales.
I don't actually have a question, but I have a reflection. Being in the chorus many, many years ago and putting a concentrated number of people together in a small space with no air, I remember several of us becoming lightheaded and that's simply what it was. It was the carbon dioxide.
That is exactly true.
Yes, so I can understand how that happens, but this was helpful and less alarming than it sounds like it could have been. So thank you for the clarification and the information.
Sure. Ms. Murdaugh.
You answered part of one of my questions. My other question is, if there's students within the classroom that are asthmatic or have any other respiratory issues, how does that affect them?
There's not a really direct correlation between the two because the carbon dioxide has symptoms, as I stated, and they don't really impact other items directly, so.
Yeah, I've had parents reach out to me saying that their student has asthma and they were lightheaded.
There is no real direct correlation between the two.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Robertson.
Uh, well, thank you for clarifying and, and I'm hoping that'll put to rest some concerns and understand the difference between CO2 and carbon monoxide.
Big difference, yes.
And we're just, it's, it's what we're breathing out, all right?
Correct.
So there were a few areas, only a couple of areas that had levels above 2,000. What were those areas?
And Hazel, I think there were three areas in question, one of them was a gymnasium. And I spoke with my inspector who did the testing at the time and he told me on that day, there was a reason that they had double-loaded the gym and there were a lot more occupants at that time, but the, the level was only slightly elevated into that 2,000, above that 2,000 mark at that time. And another point with the carbon dioxide is as soon as you introduce new air into it, you dilute it and, and the level drops relatively quickly.
Okay, there were a couple of other areas?
There was a, an art classroom, there was a, the.
At what building, I'm sorry?
Hazel also.
Also Hazel?
Yes, from what I understand. And the, that was the air, that was the building where the univentilators supplies that are outside of the windows were impeded by the plywood.
By the plywood, right.
Yeah, it was, and actually in some areas, there was, there was, it had been quite a long time because there was dirt buildup on top of them too, so.
And Hazel's also pretty, certainly very old, 1906. It was first built with an addition in 1950, so that's when the modern addition was, woo.
And they probably blocked those air shafts that are a part and parcel for those old buildings, yes.
Thank you so much.
Ms. Murdaugh.
I just wanted to thank you for clarifying, I'm sorry. I just wanted to thank you for clarifying that our schools are safe and that while it sounds silly that opening the windows is actually probably the best way to introduce fresh air into the classrooms.
Absolutely, immediate result, immediate result, yes.
Thank you.
I'd like to also thank you, in terms of opening windows, when you're dealing with levels that are in this 1,500 to 2,000 range, or 1,000 to 2,000, I guess, with a couple that are above, does it vary or is there a typical timeframe, like in terms of how many windows, how far open, how long they need to stay open?
Sure, sure. You only need to introduce a small amount of air. It's a, it's makeup air, like a negative pressure kind of, positive pressure kind of an issue that you get, so sometimes just opening the door to the hallway will do it. And, and general movement of people in the, in the room will be enough to disperse it. But usually we tell, we advise our districts to crack the window about an inch or so, maybe 15 minutes every period or so, maybe if the, if they're feeling, if the teachers who notice, they're your first response to everything, if they notice that their kids are a little lethargic or something like that, you advise them, we can, we're going to put together a little bit of a directive so, and supply that to the districts so that we can give them guidelines and share it with the teachers.
So that's one window for a regular-sized classroom?
And for 15 minutes, that's all you really need, as long as Johnny's not sitting in front of it.
All right, all right, I appreciate that, thank you.
I'm Johnny, that's why I say.
All right, anything from the liaisons? All right, I think we're good, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
That was excellent.
Sure. With regard to our bubble, that would be the next update, the district is moving forward with plans for the bubble. We have met with coaches, our AD, and different members of the staff and community to discuss our progress. There has been some feedback to take one more look at the track specifically to see if there's any way it could be extended. Currently, there's a straightaway for 75 feet, the ask is to extend it as much as to 130 feet if available. Therefore, we've asked the architect to go back to see if another drawing can be made to extend the track by perhaps moving some of the walls back on the locker spaces. The architect will do so and will have that to us by February 11th, at which time then we can make a decision if that's the route we're going to go, to then finally go out for bid. The bid would be for the interior space of the bubble, which would potentially bring us to an April slash June construction date so that we could be ready to introduce our training before school starts in September. All right, so that's with regard to the bubble. With regard to Legionella update, we have received reports back from Omega regarding the high school and Edison, we just received those reports yesterday, therefore we're going to start to look at them. We have forwarded those reports however to our Risknomics, which is the consultant that's working with us to say, these assessments have been conducted, therefore these are next steps and these are recommendations. So we received the survey from Omega who conducted the testing. We forwarded it today to Risknomics who will now develop recommendations. And when we receive those recommendations, then we will be able to present them to the board. We expect that to take approximately four to six weeks from today, so then we can expect a presentation perhaps by the end of February or early March with next steps. With that said, we've implemented all of the short-term objectives for the findings and the recommendations that the board can expect to receive, our long-term recommendations that need to be put in place. Some of those things include looking at the mapping of our dead ends to piping and drawings and really taking a risk assessment of all of the possible areas in which Legionella can be housed or grow. With regard to the security plan, we had put an RFP out to contract a security firm to begin our audit. We have reviewed all of the bids that came in and today on the board agenda, you will see a recommendation for Stonegate, that security firm was able to meet all of the expectations required by the, by the board and stipulated in the RFP. And so then, once that is approved tonight, then we will go back and begin our work with the security audit. With regard to mantraps, we have in the board packet all of the plans currently with the mantraps. We have indicated where we are in process. We currently have 10 locations that are going to appear in the budget for next year that need to be converted to the access status. That includes the exterior door being open, the interior door being locked. Those exterior doors would be open during school hours, the interior doors would be locked during school hours and that way, and there would be an interior mantrap that would potentially hold a person in that inner area. There would be a camera installed there, an intercom, and then on the outside of the door, there would be an access control where the secretary or the security guard, depending on the building, would be able to open the door. Right now, all of the spaces have been updated with Phase A of the plan and again, we will see the additions and recommendations for the budget so that those 10 locations could be completely converted to an A access status. I have the HIV report. While that's coming down, we have site visits from the state that will be implemented over the next month. The state will come in to do sample security visits, walkthroughs, attempt to get into the buildings to see if there are any at-risk access points. There will be drills, whether it may be an active shooter drill or different types of scenarios where, again, we're testing our vulnerability. We will do that in conjunction with the W, the West Orange Police Department and so then we can expect to hear that we have unannounced visits taking place. While those visits will be unannounced, the drills will be announced as drills so that no one in the building gets unnecessarily alarmed. Are there any questions on the HIV report?
A couple of questions and some of the other things you talked about earlier. For Legionella, does that mean no more water bottles?
So right now, we are providing water bottles, although all of the guidance has said that the water fountains in particular are extremely low risk, we are providing the water fountains, how, the, the water bottles. However, filters have been ordered for all of the water fountains at the high school. Once the filters arrive, they will be placed on the water fountains and then we will no longer have the need for the water bottles. That will take some time to arrive in district and be installed, so I will give you an update on the filters at the next board meeting.
Okay. And for the list of schools with mantraps, some of these schools I thought already had mantraps, but you know, as, in light of the fact that it is about security, I will ask you that offline.
Okay.
And that's it?
Just a question on HIV. At the Essex County School Board Association meeting, we were just, that we, that Ms. Mordecai is president and Ms. Trick scales and I attended, one of the hot topics raised by school board members was mental health. And one area of that they came up was HIV. And the feeling by many board members that HIV issues are often or may be related to mental health and some of them are related to mental health and that there's a need for counseling to be built into, for the, both the HIV offender as well as the HIV victim, that counseling should be built into how we address HIV. Any thoughts?
Absolutely. So HIV has been a very consistent conversation in the district. We've been receiving feedback from community members, parents, and also we've reached out to and received input from our, our community programs that Adele, deal with the benefit of students, the welfare of students. So what we've done is right now, we have identified key members that should be a part of a team, a committee to look at our HIV practices, not just compliance, because that is an area that we are guided by the state, but this committee- is an area that we are guided by the state, but this committee in particular is going to look at, what are we missing? What are we not including? We're doing the compliance, we're doing the paperwork, we have to do the HIB, we have to take care of the students in all things legal, and how about the welfare of the student, right? Both the victim and the bully alike. What can we put in place? Who can we partner with to provide counseling? While we have school counselors, they're not certified to be counselors proper, so we may be able to provide school services, small groups, group sessions, but counseling, we need to partner with some of our agencies in our community to do so. We've already reached out to two. We do have a reach into a few more so that, one, we can begin professional development. The professional development will be outside, coming in to teach us all over again, to really have a clearer understanding of HIB as we're defining it now, as the need to provide support to the students and the families. We want students who have been victims of bullying to have the counseling and/or the strategies and/or the support they need so that it doesn't bear long-term effects. And we want to be able to provide services and support to students who have been found to demonstrate bullying behaviors so that that doesn't perpetuate itself in their own future, right? So that we can provide a level of healing and support to those students as well. Also, to our families, because the bullying doesn't only affect the individual, it affects the family, and so then that's a component that we're looking to provide through the professional development. The second thing is, we've spoken to DCPMP and some of their caseworkers there, and they have suggested that we look into the nurtured heart approach, which is a different approach to social-emotional learning and to really taking a look at this effects of bullying. So we've ordered the text for all of our school counselors. As soon as they come in, we will be, myself included, with Ms. Butler and some of our counselors and outside agencies, helping us to facilitate a discussion around it so we can learn about the approach. And I don't want to say move away from, because all actions have consequences, but to couple consequences with the necessary counseling and supports that are necessary so that we're not just being consequence-centered, right, on what's happening, but that we're really taking into account that we're needing to address the needs of the students, the heart of the student. So with that said, we have identified the roles for the committee that we need to put in place. We've begun preliminary discussions with community members, parents. I want to thank the parents who have availed themselves and come to meet with me, to talk to us about the strategies that we need to put in place. And once we have that structure, I'll come back and provide a formal report so that we can certainly make some stride in the area of dealing with and approaching bullying in our district.
That's wonderful. And it sounds like, too, the learnings that come from that and some of the best practices, including the nurture heart approach, may also lend itself to something that Ms. Trigsscales has talked about a lot, restorative justice approaches to other discipline areas not related to HIB. That's really wonderful. Thank you for that work and for providing that update.
Thank you to the parents and to the school counselors who are bringing that to our attention.
I'd just like to add, if I might. I had the occasion to attend a workshop on trauma and the effects of trauma on children. And I think that that's something I'd like to share with you, the contact information, because it really, really addresses the issue of some of the behaviors that we're seeing, is that our children are really traumatized. And it can be anything from divorce or separation, or it can be something as simple as something that they've witnessed on TV or in a movie that they can't process. And it was very enlightening for an old administrator like me to be able to gain insight as to how it manifests itself in young people.
Mr. and Ms., I'd just like to add, to piggyback on what Mr. Robertson said, last year, at another Essex County School Board Association meeting, we experienced the mindfulness example. And I believe one of the parents came to the microphone last year, I'm thinking it's Ms. Beazer, it might have been her, coming to the microphone, talking to us about social-emotional learning and mindfulness. And I know our new commissioner, in his old district, Asbury Park, he started an entire program. And the young lady who did it in Asbury Park is who came to the Essex County School Boards meeting to give us an example of what to do. So I know the commissioner's going in that direction. We all want to go into that direction, and thank you to Ms. Beazer for bringing that up. So it'd be great if we were able to take a look at that and see where we can implement that. I know we already partnered with Cope at Edison, so I'm not sure if you want to expand that partnership as far as your mental health and other services that you need. Because we're already in partnership with them. See if they have extensive resources that they can give us. Thank you.
So if I could just add one more thing. I'm kind of on the opposite side of promoting the positive. I think everyone knows that about me. So rather than looking into something like restorative justice and some of these other things that focus in on the negative, I'd rather look at more, and something that we can maybe look at as well or introduce with it, is looking at the positive behavior support interventions, where it's focusing on the positive. And it's something I've spoken with Coach LaKella about, where we're promoting the positive of what our students are doing and engaging students, and having others see that may help them refrain from the bullying and some of the negative actions. So something to think about, not...
Sure. Actually, I'm glad you brought that up. More than just thinking about it, Kelly was just accepted into PBS, the Positive Behavior Support Model. So they will be working with their school community to begin moving in that direction, based on how they do and what they're finding, then we'll look to model that into some of our other schools. So that's a very good point.
I thought teachers were already taking trainings on restorative justice. Pretty sure I saw it on a few agendas last year.
Which is something different, but, so we have PBS formal program that Kelly is moving into, restorative justice, yes. We have a teacher on our staff who is doing their dissertation in that area, and as a part of the dissertation, she has graciously offered to train our students and our staff. That training started already, and so we look forward to hearing about the learning as a part of that work. They will also be pushing restorative justice strategies into our curriculum with little mini lessons. That was one of Mr. Robertson's ideas. So again, we're taking, Dr. Parry, and so we're taking all of the feedback and we're working it into our programs.
Part of the restorative justice training with the teacher on staff, and I think it was really beneficial because we had, like, circle exercises where we would deal, would kind of fake deal with problems and mediate circles, and it was really an insightful experience. And I think doing that with HIB would also be really beneficial for students just all over the district, rather than just those students in the program.
Yeah. Excellent.
All right. Thank you. Next up, questions from the public on agenda items only. If you have questions for the board, please come up to the microphone, state your name and address, and you'll have three minutes on the clock.
My name is Jasper Hilliard, and I'm a junior in West Orange High School. Last Friday, I got an email saying that nearly fifty percent of the classrooms I learn and take tests in have high levels of CO2, high enough amounts to seriously impair mental function, according to studies. It's a good thing that the Board of Ed took the initiative and carried out the tests to be done, but this problem is nothing new. Last year, a report came out in the school newspaper raising the exact same concerns. A board meeting was held, and yet no action was taken, or at least that action was insufficient, because our classrooms are still full of CO2. My question to the Board of Ed is, what will you do differently this year to resolve the problem and comply with state law?
Thank you.
Jennifer Beazer, eighty-two Lawrence Avenue. First, on the Legionella, Ms. Mendez, you mentioned reports from West Orange High School and Edison. Are those the only two schools that haven't been cleared yet, where there still are ongoing issues? On the CO2, thank you for taking the initiative and getting all of the schools tested. I would like to know, I got a letter from Roosevelt where my daughter goes, but across the district, how many classrooms were over a thousand in how many different buildings? And I think we mentioned some in Hazel, but how many were over two thousand? While I see that New Jersey and OSHA might allow higher levels, where it's shown that over one thousand can cause drowsiness, I think everyone agrees, we don't want our students to be drowsy. So there needs to be a plan. And I want to be sure that the principals and the teachers in those buildings, in those classrooms, will have some kind of instruction of what to look out for and what exactly they need to do to keep fresh air flowing in, and that students should feel free, if they're having a headache or feeling dizzy, that they should know to speak up and get some fresh air. I hope that the problem is as simple to solve as taking some plywood off of a vent, but I'm kind of curious or surprised, why was the plywood put on the vent? Isn't there somebody looking at those kind of things to make sure that doesn't happen? Thanks.
Thank you.
Jeremiah Salinas, seven, Crystal Ave. At a meeting last year, we actually spoke about this, but it seems like we're just putting bandages on stuff. So there's no resolution, like the young man said before. The levels that are, you guys are talking about, possible harm starts at eight hundred to nine hundred and ninety-nine. So we're not, we're way over that. More outdoor air is needed at a thousand, but the gentleman is talking about opening up windows, right? Do we have safety concerns for everybody that's on first floor, can first floor, especially our elementary schools, our one-level schools? If you open up the first-floor windows, that creates a security concern, something that we haven't really discussed about. Supposed to rain all day tomorrow. We're going to open up the windows when it rains? We're going to open up the windows when it's four degrees outside and the wind is whipping at thirty miles an hour? And it's minus twenty degrees with the windshield factor? So it sounds very simple, but it really isn't, because we've lacked, I guess, an approach in finding a designated person to make sure that these things are taken care of to begin with, following the established operating, documenting preventative maintenance schedules for our schools. When was the testing done? Was the testing done at all the schools? At what time was the testing done? Was it done in the morning? Was it done in the afternoon? How many kids were in the classrooms? So all of these things, we really don't get an answer. We just get a broad-brush, general explanation of what these things are. And sometimes the language is not clear, so that parents really don't understand or don't have full understanding of what's going on. So these are some of the things that we have to make sure that we get. We were told last year that airflow vents were going to be replaced at the high school and at other places in the district, but we never really got an answer as to when these things were done or how many of them. I know we spoke about costs, and that was one thing that was a concern, but we didn't hear back, and we never got a report back of how many were changed or where were they changed. There's no written plan, right? So going forward, we're moving forward with the air quality thing that seems to come up again, there's no plan. There's always an explanation, but there's no plan. Same thing with the water. There's an explanation as to why. We know why, but there's no plan. We don't have a solution. So we test certain areas, but then we come back and then we test a different spot. So we've got to make sure we get it right. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone further? Okay, seeing none, we'll close that part of comment. And Ms. Mendez?
Sure. I'm going to ask our consultant to come back, John, if you would, and answer some of the questions, and then I'll answer some of the other questions. One of our students, Jasper, mentioned that the levels of CO2 are damaging to the brain. Could you talk to us about our levels and what the accuracy of the statements are?
As we all know, it's mostly guidelines that have been established because carbon dioxide is a humanly generated gas. So the levels that they've established are those ones that I presented earlier. The levels of concern between a thousand and five thousand is the just that we try to address. The levels that we've seen in any of the testing done, and we've tested different times of year. I know that we've been back, I think, three different times, a couple of times at the high school, and then throughout district also. And also, when we've been in district for numerous years doing indoor air quality testing on very numerous occasions, and at that time that we do that testing, we also test for those same things. We have documented those over the years, and we've been in every building in district and had to do some indoor air quality evaluations over the years. And the levels have never, they've never been raised to a level of concern. Anything that's above the twenty-five-hundred range, we would have immediately taken some action to make sure that there was something that was done to address that. Now, that's, you know, we can only follow the guidelines that we have that are set forth by, you know, several of the agencies, federal and state.
Okay. Thank you. In the district, Ms. Beazer, we have three classrooms that are over two thousand. Where's Ms. Beazer? Is she still here? Oh, I'm sorry. Over two thousand, I think it's between two thousand and two thousand four hundred and thirty-two, something like that. So there are three classrooms. They are at Hazel. Those are the three classrooms that were described earlier. What are we doing? We've already put out a quote to have the univents repaired in those three classrooms. That should happen within the next few weeks. However, our long-term plan, Mr. Salinas, we do have plans that we are sharing with the board in both areas, CO2 and Legionella. For the replacing of HVACs, we have begun to present estimated costs. If we were to fix, for example, one hundred and ninety-eight HVACs to replace them, it would start at five million and a half. That would be just HV, just heat. If we were to replace them with HVAC, which would include air conditioning, that would be nine million dollars. However, those initial estimates have been provided to the board. We will be providing those projections as part of our budget to say, these are the things that we need to consider, along with possible options that may have to look outside of our budget. So you will be hearing those plans in the upcoming meetings.
And subsequently, after our initial assessment, district-wide assessment, any of the levels that we, any of the areas that were tested that were over a thousand, the maintenance department is looking at those units and has done a study of them to determine whether or not the, there's mechanically something that can be addressed to correct that. But a lot of problems that we found, and I spoke with my inspector who did the actual inspection and testing, a lot of times, what he found mostly was that these univentilators had been covered over, and they were still active, but various teaching materials were on top of them, sometimes because of the noise, sometimes because of the temperature. But it's the occupants of the classrooms sometimes that actually impede in the natural dispersion of the...
Yep. Thank you. So what we're doing with buildings and grounds... So, what we're doing with buildings and grounds is we're doing walkthroughs of all of the buildings. We're going to ask for all instructional materials to be removed from the vents. Sometimes, on occasion, someone will turn off a univent. We're going to make sure that they're turned on. And there are univents that need repair, and that's what you're going to hear in the budget as we're going through the assessment of our HVACs, which ones really need repair, if we need to do them all at the same time, or if we need to begin to phase that in. I will share that the lifespan of an HVAC, as I'm learning, is between 20 to 25 years. Our univents can range anywhere from 49 to 70 years old. Why are they boarded up? We're learning that each year, which probably predates everyone here, the affordability factor was there as far, as in to say, we can't afford to replace all of the HVACs, therefore, it falls off the budget, and it falls off the budget, and it falls off the budget. And so, therefore, we started to see that some Band-Aid effects were placed, and those things were boarded up. And so, we're at the point where the board is going to need to make a decision about replacing HVAC units. They are well past their life expectancy. And then, in our newer areas where there have been additions or newer buildings, those univents are already 14 years old, 15 years old. So, we're going to have to think about some long-term planning and some definite replacement, and what implications that would bear upon the district. Thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you. And I would point out that we have repaired some univents at the high school, which we've tested first, because then we had to wait till the heat came back on to test the elementary schools, but we repaired a number in the high school, right?
Correct. We did. There were five repaired at the high school.
Okay. Comments from other board members?
Sure. I was going to add that we did repair some of the high school, but also, is this information being shared with Mr. Siggy? Because in the past, he's done, we've done HVAC work. So, I'd like to have him come in and present what he's done so far and the status, because he should know the status of all the HVACs, as he's the director of custodians. And each building has its head custodian, who should be checking every school and reporting back to him and him to the board so that we can plan for our budget cycle.
Absolutely. He's been involved in every single conversation, all of our reporting and all of our planning. So, he is heading this dialogue, and we're just reporting it out.
I'm shocked to hear that anything is over 40 years old. Almost every year, we spend about $5 million on buildings and grounds. Of course, he comes with a list of, you know, 20-odd million, and we put about $5 million. And we did quite a lot with the ESIP. So, I'm shocked that anything is 40 years.
We'll invite him to come to our next board meeting, and then he can provide an update of any repairs and/or things that were fixed and/or remediated. However, we did meet this morning again, and our HVAC systems are very, very old in age.
Yep. All right. Just a quick question. Well, first, I want to thank Jasper Hilliard for stepping up. We appreciate that. As we've seen, when our students step up and voice their opinions and their observations, it makes a difference. So, thank you for doing that. I don't remember whether it was Jasper or Mr. Salinas, but one asked a question about whether this is the directions for what to do for mediation within each classroom and been communicated to all the teachers.
Good. So, I sent an email out to the faculty that we would be receiving guidance from AHRRA by tomorrow, and so then, that's coming. And I let them know that as soon as we receive that, that we would be providing that guidance. And so, then, I expect to do so by tomorrow.
Thank you.
And also, there, we also sent the staff a survey, because even though we are testing all of our classrooms, and we've done so, they are in the classrooms every day. And so, I would like to have our test results in terms of visual observances, temperature in the classroom, et cetera, which HVAC units are not working properly in their estimation. Alongside our formal reports, we've asked for them to survey and send us any classrooms that we need to do walkthroughs in to physically assess, in addition to what we're receiving in formal reports.
Thank you.
Next, can we have a motion for personnel? Item A, numbers 1 through 7.
A motion?
A motion.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
All right. Mr. Calabano?
Mrs. Merklinger?
Yes.
Mr. Robertson?
Yes.
Mrs. Triggs Scales?
Yes.
Vice President Mordecai?
Yes, with abstentions under letter B, Deborah Robinson. Abstentions under letter J, Brett Carroll and Andrew Chen. And my vote is yes for the rest.
And President Alper?
Yes.
All right. Next, can we have a motion for item B, curriculum and instruction, numbers 1 through 14?
I'll make that motion.
Okay. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All right. Mr. Calabano?
Mrs. Merklinger?
Yes.
Mr. Robertson?
Yes.
Mrs. Triggs Scales?
Yes, with the exception of myself. Is that in the appropriate area?
Nope. That's the next section.
Oh, the next section. Okay. So, yes.
Vice President Mordecai?
Yes.
President Alper?
Yes.
All right. Next, can we have a motion for finance, special services, items 1 through 5, and business office, items 1 through 13?
I'll make a motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All right. Any discussion? I would just like to call out, on page 11, actually, item 2, the approval for tuition extraordinary services. That adds up to $77,000 in unbudgeted expenses if you add it up. This is, as you hear us say every now and then, the thing where the state of New Jersey allows schools taking out of district students to retroactively increase the price they charge us, up to three years, I think it is, after the fact. So, that's what it looks like when it happens. And the other few things I would point out, business office items 5 and 6 on page 13, we get asked about this a lot, so I'll just point out, these are non-public aid programs where the state provides the money to go to the non-public schools in town. State law says those items have to be funded through our hands, so the money comes in and goes right out. It's not West Orange taxpayer money, but that's why it appears on the budget, on the agenda. And on item 9, I just want to thank the donors for their generous donations. And I think we can vote.
So, going back to non-public security aid, the state just released additional funds for the non-public schools. So, at our next agenda, we'll be approving the revised allocations for each of the non-pubs.
Great.
Mrs. Merklinger?
Yes, with the exception of myself.
Mr. Robertson?
Yes.
Mrs. Triggs Scales?
Yes, with the exception of myself.
Vice President Mordecai?
Yes, with the abstention under vendor number 5477, and also, voting though on item number 12, page 14.
President Alper?
Yes.
All right. Miscellaneous items 1 through 3. On number 3, just a housekeeping note, there's a typo on the buildings and grounds and transportation calendar. January 1 is listed as a Monday on that item. It's actually a Wednesday. It was fixed on item 2. Yeah, it was not me. It was John. It was fixed on the central office calendar, but we neglected to fix it on the other. So, we're going to amend that and approve that as amended for number 3. So, can I have a motion for item D, numbers 1 through 3 amended?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Great. Any discussion? All right. Let's vote.
Mrs. Merklinger?
Yes.
Mr. Robertson?
Yes.
Mrs. Triggs Scales?
Yes.
Vice President Mordecai?
Yes.
President Alper?
Yes.
I just wanted to go back to Mrs. Triggs Scales' vote for the abstention. It really belongs in curriculum, not in finance. You were right. Because I thought I had a check for you, but I don't have a check. It was your school business. So, I'll reflect that in a minute. I'm sorry about that.
Cheryl had one too, right?
She was okay. Oh, her school business?
My apologies. NJSBA.
Right.
Because you paid in advance for the actual... My apologies. I have to abstain on that one.
Okay. I'll make the change.
For the...
All right. All clear?
Yes.
E, reports. Can we get a motion for item 1, the HIV report?
I'll make that motion.
Second?
Second.
All right. Mr. Calabano?
Mrs. Merklinger?
Is this just the report from today?
This is on the HIV report, letter E.
Yes.
Yes. Mr. Robertson?
Yes.
Mrs. Triggs Scales?
Yes, we're moving so fast, the new people can't keep up.
It's a lot of pages. We're keeping moving.
It's a lot of paper, yeah.
Vice President Mordecai?
Yes.
President Alper?
Yes.
Okay. Any reports from board members tonight to start this end with Mrs. Triggs Scales?
Yes, I do, if I can get myself reorganized here. Okay. I've just been noticing and patch and tap that West Orange is, our students are burning things up, just from poetry to wrestling to rapping. I mean, it's just phenomenal. So, just a shout-out, West Orange proud, for our students, and keep up the good work. I did attend the 8th grade transition meeting at the high school, and it was well-attended. That's for incoming freshman parents and their students. And the guidance department hosted that meeting, and a lot of good information was shared. And I don't know if people were excited or were full of anxiety. I'm not quite sure which it was, but there was a lot of energy in the air. I also attended all three sessions of the WOCEPAC parent workshops on seclusion and restraint. And that last session was interactive, and all participants really had a good time. It was a very serious subject and topic, but it was presented by one of our staff members, and I don't have the name, but very well-done, and I think it was very informative for parents. I also, as Mr. Robertson said, attended the Essex County School Board Association meeting, of which our vice president is president, and had the opportunity to meet a lot of fellow board members. And it was a wonderful opportunity to chat, share concerns and challenges, and also to learn that there are other ways of doing business. And so, I look forward to continuing those conversations as we grow as a board with two new members and as we move forward. And I'm also happy to learn that the New Jersey School Board Association has initiated an Equity Council. This is something new, and this council examines the issue of educational equity and research. And this, too, will also share best practices. And we certainly have a responsibility here in West Orange to examine issues of equity in our, just for examples, our ELL program, our gifted program, our AP classes, special ed honors, and on and on. And when we talk about equity, it's looking at individual groups and where there are gaps and discrepancies, making the concerted effort to bring some level of equality. So, equity and equality are two different things, and we need to pay more attention to equity. And the National School Boards Association, and I printed this, has published a timely article titled, "Teacher Diversity Matters: Recruitment, Retention Are Part of the Complex Solution." And our education commissioner, La Paulette, has also stressed the research that supports the need for students of color to have role models in the classroom, and that research shows that this does affect performance. And then, I just heard on the news as I was leaving, something called Catch My Breath Youth E-Cigarette Prevention Program. We know that vaping is a huge, huge issue, and I don't know if any of the parents here tonight happened to catch that on, I think it was Channel 2. But there is a program, and it's designed for middle school and high school students about the dangers and risks of vaping. And so, I'd like us to investigate that and see if that's something that would be relevant for our district. Thank you.
Sure. Thank you. Wonderful. Thank you, Mrs. Triggs Scales. I'm actually on the Equity Council, and I've attended all the sessions so far. At the last meeting, I reported out that while we have an equity plan, we don't have an equity policy. So, I've started to work on the policy. I think at our last policy committee meeting, it was myself and Mr. Robertson, but we didn't finish the equity policy. So, now, you're on the policy committee with me. So, looking forward to going over the equity policy with you and working on that. And I agree with you. The Essex County School Board Association meeting was really very well-attended. We had 40 people register, and 45 came. So, it was really, really, really good. One takeaway that stayed with me, a Bloomfield board member started a postcard-writing campaign to legislators. So, he's going to send me a sample of what they've done in Bloomfield. I don't believe in reinventing the wheel. So, it would be great if West Orange parents did something similar here, a postcard-writing campaign to your legislators to talk about various school issues, whether it's e-cigarettes and vaping, or equity, or school funding, or HIV, whatever concerns you have, to make sure you send a postcard to Miley JC, who is our Assemblywoman, or John McKeon, or, you know, you could go further. You can go to a federal, federal level if you want. But it would be good if we did something similar. I also had the opportunity to attend the math committee meeting, and it was the only one I attended. I don't know when the next follow-up meeting will be, but I am looking forward to hearing more about connected math, everyday math, and all the changes that are coming down the pike. So, so far, so good. There were two vendors there. I will, I will reserve the rest of my comments until I've attended a couple more meetings. But as of now, it was quite informative. Thank you.
Mr. Robertson? First, a shout-out to our bowling team, who's undefeated, 14-0. And I want to make sure that coaches, and actually, they don't even have a booster club, but coaches and parents get the word out and in social media, that we update our Facebook page on Instagram with information on them, and we have an updated stuff on cross-country. But making sure, we should just make sure that the coaches and the parent boosters noted to get that information to us, so we can highlight. We have teams excelling in so many areas. I mean, which is a beautiful thing. We just, we need to give them the type of highlight they deserve. As Mrs. Mordecai mentioned, I attended the math meeting as well. Wow, that was very intense, and looking at the two different options that we have in instruction, I was really happy to see, while it was low attendance for the meeting, I was happy to see that more parents, like Mrs. Gordon, are, were involved with the teachers and the committees and looking at the curriculum. And she's a math teacher in New York public schools, and that was very cool to have that, have, we had, you know, have more parents getting involved, and that's great. It's, you know, both curricula had something to offer. My concerns were, and the thing is, it's such a limited amount of time for them to present, to be able to address everything. But I wanted to make sure that they were addressing enrichment sufficiently and some other areas. But it was still very, very intense. At the Essex County SBA, that was really a fantastic meeting. The ideas, all the school board members got to submit their topics for discussion, and then, Mrs. Mordecai and the other SBA folks would group them together by subject matter. And mental health was really, really huge. They talked at length about, all the districts were raising concerns about anxiety and depression among students, unreported, underreported, but very prevalent, known to be very prevalent, and the role and the need to do more professional development for teachers and beyond just suicide prevention, because there's such a range of experiences and behaviors and consequences. You know, while suicide prevention is something that we need to train people well, and that we do, we're not doing enough training. The feeling by many districts is, there needs to be more training for teachers and administrators on anxiety and depression. Needs to be more work done in the curricula, and you've heard me raise this here before. It was kind of reassuring to hear that this is felt by other school board members as well, but needs to be more done in terms of building it into the curricula, teaching kids how to cope, how to get help in elementary and middle school, as well as high school, and providing more counseling support. They also talked about vaping. Yes, that was the explosion of vaping and the impact it has on students, and the role of social media, smartphones, and video gaming, particularly Fortnite, impact on student mental health and beh... Fortnite, impact on student mental health and behaviors. It was very, very informative, and just a lot of great ideas, a lot of great observations. There were also concerns raised by a mom with, very poignant moment there actually, about making sure that teachers, gen ed teachers, understand, how can I express this? She was concerned about the labeling of kids who have IEPs and making sure that they're well-incorporated into the learning environment and not so much labeled and separated out. I know that's always a challenge, because you're trying to address the students' specific needs while still making sure, but I know that we train our people in that, but that was just a concern that was raised with quite a bit of emotion, actually. It's good, it's interesting to note that Verona, unfortunately after a very tragic student suicide, invested over $600,000 in a mental health initiative that includes partnering or hiring a company to help them significantly improve counseling to all kids, to try to be, to do some preemptive counseling and awareness efforts, as well as professional development with the teachers. And their whole community just really embraced it, there was, it appeared to be a no-brainer by the board to invest in it, so that was important to note. And the other group I was involved with, and the breakout groups, was engaging the community, and our community and student awards got major props. Other people from other districts were saying, wow, that was wonderful that you all did that, they read about it online, they read about newspapers, and they said they wanted to do this, so that was good to know that we're doing something that got us positive recognition, that also others feel works. Bloomfield did something, I know that we have Mount near mentors, and we have a lot of volunteerism going on with the honor societies, et cetera. Bloomfield decided to structure theirs a little bit, and they actually had student volunteers, their, in order to meet their high school volunteer requirements, paired up with all the community organizations, so they kind of formalized it and said, okay, whether it's, you know, the J.C.'s or Kiwanis Club, we have these student volunteers who want to help out, what, what can you offer them, and they formalized the process. But some of the other things, it was reassuring to know that some of the other things we're talking about doing, they not only thought were good ideas, some of them were already doing them. And we talked about the community, the Community Relations Committee as an extension of the PR Committee, everyone was hyped on that, and, and the idea of getting, providing that opportunity for involvement and feedback, and kind of with an ongoing vehicle to do it. Town hall meetings, a number of districts had already done that, some did it as a board meeting, so that all the board members could attend, could attend, some broke it out and did one per school, with the superintendent leading it and different board members attending different times, and they found, they had various levels, had, you know, the reports varied in terms of effectiveness, but overall, everyone felt it was a good idea to do. And that, that was basically it, and one also mentioned, this is something we've talked about here, so it wasn't just our issue, talked about utilizing all communications channels to get the word out about different things, and making sure that we've addressed the channels of communication that align with each of our audiences or stakeholders, whether it's, okay, there's some folks who are still reading newspapers, let's get it in that, you know, those who are utilizing social media, but utilizing the robo-calls, the social media, all the communications channels, to make sure that people are aware of what they need to be aware of. That was it, it was just a really, it was a, it was a really fantastic meeting, getting to share ideas, and here's so many ideas from so many other board members. Thank you.
So, I like to ever end meetings on positive notes, so Terry and Mark actually kind of stole some of my thunder on talking about a lot of our programs on our student athletes and our students in the arts and music, so I just want to recognize, the girls indoor relay team won the Essex County Tournament, our wrestling folks did very well at the rest, at the Essex County Tournament. The girls, in fact, I'm not sure if everyone knows that we have a girls wrestling team, but they did very well at the Lady Buck Classic, that was a few weeks ago. Like Mark said, our bowling team is undefeated, fifteen and oh. So, we're doing a lot of things, a lot of you may have seen on like the Patch and on NJ.com, some of our student athletes are being recognized for student athletes of the week or the month, so I urge everyone to go in and vote for our students, so that West Orange High athletes get more recognition, and that also helps them, when you apply for college, to be able to say that you were recognized as the Essex County Student Athlete of the Week, that's huge, so definitely, please go in and vote for our students. The hockey team has senior night next Monday, February 4th, so if you could be there, I will be there. Our Color Guard Invitational was just this past weekend, I heard it went very well, I couldn't get there myself, but I heard it was a lot of great performances. This Friday, in addition to the Black History Month Social Scholarship Dinner, there is also, our basketball teams are going to be playing, JV's at 5:30 and varsity's at 7:00. It's National Girls, Women in Sports Day, I myself, as a former scholar athlete in high school and college, something I'm really looking forward to, to support overall, so I encourage everyone, if you can go to the dinner at 6:00 and then come over to the basketball game at 7:00, that would be great. Our theater department performed at the Speech and Theater Association of New Jersey Governors Award Competition, they did very well there. Our band performed in the Newark, Jersey area band concert. Oriana Carter won the poetry out loud, and is going on to represent West Orange in the regionals. Gregory School put in a sensory path, in case anyone didn't see that online. Tomorrow night, there's a college and career planning night at, here at West Orange, at 7 o'clock, so I think that's a great opportunity for our students. Saturday is the principals bowling for scholarship dollars, so if anyone's around this weekend, definitely come out and support the high school through that program. Something that I think is awesome, only one out of 150 cadets in the world are recognized for this, so Cadet Captain Antoine Chapman is going to be receiving his private pilot, private? Pilot license scholarship, and that's an amazing accomplishment. Devon Neal just won on Nickelodeon's Lip Sync Battle Shorties with Ice Ice Baby, and, and I apologize, I'm not going to be able to pronounce her name correctly, but Praga Paramara got the silver key at the Solastic Arts and Writing Competition. So, we're doing a lot of amazing things, our students are awesome, these are just some of the high school events, our kids in the youth sports programs, Mountain Top just had their top soccer program, the PAL program has been hosting baseball clinics for the town, so we're doing a lot of great things here in West Orange, and I would say, keep up on the Facebook page, the Instagram postings, be sure to share those, so that we get more publicity and recognizing all of our kids.
Great, awesome. Thank you. Cheryl took both my plugs, so I have, no, that's okay, I'll see some of you bowling on Saturday. You're bowling, right?
Yes.
You're bowling too?
Yes.
All right, great. That's a quorum, we're in trouble. All right, our next board meeting will be held right here, 8:00 PM, that's for sure, on February 11th, we'll see you then, and now it's time for petitions and hearings of citizens, if you have anything you'd like to share, please come up to the mic, share your name and address, and you'll have three minutes on the clock.
Susan Duarte, 14 Cohen Place, I'd like to know if the district has some kind of policy where they check the schools for mice and mice droppings, there are classrooms that, there are mice running through when kids are there, the locker rooms, there are mice when the kids open up their locker sometimes, it's gross, it's a health issue, and also, does buildings and grounds ever go around and just look? Because if you walk around the schools, there's weather stripping that's loose, there's stuff that needs to be caulked, it's all stuff that, it doesn't cost a lot of money if you address it at the beginning, but over time, you know, it rots windows, it, you know, messes with the sheet rock and stuff, just, just the little things that could be checked, that could save so much money for our district.
Thank you.
Hi, Rosemary Martos, 2600 In Road, first of all, shout out to some of our elementary schools, Mount Pleasant had an amazing day of service, I'm sure there are others in the district, but I know the kids did a mix it up, they went to all different classrooms, my six-year-olds can't stop talking about it, so, we're doing great things at our elementary schools too, I just want to plug that a little bit. Speaking of Mount Pleasant, I know I was here six years ago, standing here talking about ice, I'm back talking about ice again, I know that budget is tight, I know we've put in a retaining wall, they need to continue the retaining wall, because it stopped the ice where it is, but now it's just spilling over the top. I know other parents sent images today to Bob Siggy of the ice. It is a problem, because we can't just tell them to walk on the other side of the street, the other day, they had to evacuate the building, and our children come out of their classroom door and down the hill, and at the bottom where it pools up, right, they had to cross the street, right? I know it was pouring rain, there was a whole bunch of other things going on, that you can't control, but they could have, I was really concerned about the ice, right? Under all that water, what could have happened? Nothing happened, I'm glad nothing happened, but in all of our things, our carbon dioxide, our Legionella, I know there's a lot going on, but we need to go back and take a look at that special situation over at Mount Pleasant. Thank you for your time.
Jennifer Beazer, 82 Lawrence Avenue, first, I was really happy to hear that discussion about the nurture heart approach and restorative justice and positive behavioral supports, I think this is all a really healthy direction for our district to be going, away from just a list of punishments that will happen for various infractions. Back to, for a moment, the carbon dioxide, I had asked also about how many rooms were over a thousand, which is the point that has been identified as where drowsiness and headaches or whatever could occur, but, and I was actually able to find that in the letter that Ms. Mendez posted, and I see it's 195 out of 549 tested, so that's a lot, and I understand the protocol for those rooms is to make sure that their systems are functional, which I guess means that they can have windows opened. I know Edison, for example, uses a lot of classrooms in the basement, a lot of the specials rooms, like an art room, are in the basement, I would think most gyms don't have windows that can be opened, so I really hope that this is, we're going, this is a much longer fix, and I understand you needed this data, and you'll need to come back with the budget and looking at how this is all really going to get fixed, but for the stop-gap measure, that, that's a, that's a lot of classrooms that have an issue, and I hope that all of those teachers and all those building principals understand how they can alleviate that. Last, I heard at the last Roosevelt PTA meeting, excuse me, that the winter map testing had been eliminated, and so the students are only going to be tested in the fall and in the spring, and that that happened as a result of a lot of feedback from teachers and parents about over-testing, and I would like to say, thank you, I'm very happy to see, you know, this has been an issue we've talked about over and over again, and for the last couple of years, it seems like we've just added more and more testing, and I'm really happy to see that, so thank you. On that note, we're at the point where middle school honors testing would be getting started in February and March, and I'm wondering when information will come out for middle school parents about what that process will be this year. Thanks.
Jeremiah Salinas, seven, Crystal Ave, whenever a consultant performs an evaluation of a workplace, health hazard, a report needs to be written and made available to everybody. High-quality reports promote not just peace of mind to parents, but they also provide information to the community as to how money is being spent. There was a couple of questions that I asked earlier, I don't know if you're going to address them a little bit later, about the security of opening up windows during the day, especially in first-floor units, but in addition to that, besides visual inspections, which really don't tell you much unless something is really, really wrong, and at that point, you're going to have to throw a lot of money into this, is there something else being done with mice, that was a concern as well that I had, or the mold that some of our schools are probably building up, because we're just really not diving deep into cleaning the buildings, and that seems to be an ongoing issue here. The language that needs to be used for parents has to be a lot more clear and concise, and we have to stop using a lot of jargon and make it more understandable for everyone. I believe you said that the cost for changing the HVAC units is going to be anywhere between five million and nine million dollars? I asked a question earlier, that I thought we had already made some changes and had already made some repairs, or something had been done because of the initial concern that a student brought up here at the high school. But you said there were five units changed, I thought it was a lot more than that, and I thought we had allocated money for that already, so I think those three million dollars that we gave back over the summer are going to come back and bite us. Again, I don't know if the state is going to provide the necessary financial requirements that they are supposed to give to us over the summer, and I know we are going to, or you are going to start developing the budget now, not knowing how much money you're going to receive. Now, if that money is not, or if the money is not provided by the state, because of whatever reason they come up with, do we have enough in capital reserve to make sure that all of this gets taken care of, in addition to the things that need to be done with the bubble, which I already thought that we already had money set aside, but for some odd reason, we don't now, and then the additional money that might be needed for the track and all this other new stuff that's just popping up all over the place. Thank you.
Good evening, Katie Whitzig, 49 Manger Road, I have a question about the man trap at Mount Pleasant, my son is in third grade, and in kindergarten, I was told we were getting a man trap, and they started it over the summer, and then work stopped. So, I'm just wondering when, is it going to get installed while he's in third grade, or am I going to look for like fifth grade? I'm just kind of wondering, because I was told in kindergarten, we were getting a man trap, and we're halfway through third grade, so I want to know about a time schedule. I know that a lot of other security things came up, and a lot of other man traps at other places, but I know it's been a concern at Mount Pleasant prior to all the other concerns, so I'm just wondering kind of where we are on the list, so, thank you.
Anyone further? All right, seeing none, we'll close that portion.
Okay, let's see. So, Ms. Woodsay, the man trap at Mount Pleasant. We have completed the first phase of the man trap at Mount Pleasant current, so what does that mean? There's the exterior door and the interior door. The exterior door should be able to remain open, so that the interior door can be locked when a person comes in, that's where we're moving toward, all right? So, why are we moving toward that? Because when we leave the outside one open, a, let's say a parent comes in, the interior one is locked, and so then they have to be buzzed in, and the exterior door would close behind them, and so hypothetically, if there were an intruder or someone we're not able to ID, then they would be trapped between the exterior and the interior door. That phase is supposed to take place next year. We will be in, this will be in the budget for that second phase. Why? Because the controls need to be moved from the exterior to the interior, that's what needs to happen now in order to accomplish that phase, but that is the plan or the timeline for the man traps, and that would be for all ten locations. That estimate was provided to the board, that's about $68,000 to have all ten locations completed by the end of, or by the beginning of next year, should it pass in the budget. Mr. Salinas, all right, you're correct, all of our consultants should and do provide us with formal reports. The reports for CO2 were received just recently, and the reports for Legionella were received today, therefore, we're going through those, we will publish those, so you will see the, the consultant-created reports published. With regard to security, opening of doors and opening of windows on the first floor, we are doing walkthroughs because of that, we've discussed that, we can't use the option of opening doors, for example, we're not permitted to do so, that's a security risk, so it has to be.
So it has to be the cracking of the window. But we're going to have to do those walkthroughs and provide our teachers with very specific guidance as to what can and cannot be done. With regard to the $5 to $9 million in repairs, and have any repairs been done? There have been some repairs to the HVACs done, specifically the five at the high school that were done, their levels were elevated, and so then the repairs were made. The problem is that the units are so old that the parts are not made anymore. And so we are in a place where the recommendation, again, will go to the board to say, we must begin to replace the HVAC or the HV units. It is an astronomical amount. We are going to face some very tough decisions in this budget year in terms of how we can potentially address all of the facilities' needs that we have. This is going to be our conversation from here moving forward until we come to a resolve in terms of how to fix these. The state funding, the $3 million that was returned back, that was the decision that was made, has announcement been made that suggests we're going to get additional funding this year? That's what they're saying. When does the governor's message come out?
March 5th.
March 5th, we'll know. And so if that's the case, then would $3 million put a dent in the five? Absolutely, but that would be, again, a board decision to decide how they are going to move forward with that additional state funding. My recommendation, along with Mr. Calavano, is certainly going to be if we do receive additional state funding, and we're going to allot it somewhere, that it be allotted to facilities, that we not use it for any other area, because that's where our concerns are. Do we have enough in capital reserve for the bubble? Want to talk about that?
Presently, we have no capital reserve funds available. We do have, of the $3.5 million, we put aside $500,000 for the bubble. We already dipped into it because we had to pay for some change orders and architect's contract, so we have about $389,000 that we can use for the actual interior. Regarding capital reserve, the only way you could fund that is during the budget process, which is part of your 2% cap for your tax levy. So we'd have to make a deposit into capital reserve that time, and we can't do it during budget time. Or, if you have excess funds at year-end, then those funds can be allocated into capital reserve. Unfortunately, our surplus each year is low. The state allows us to keep 2%, that's the recommended, the auditor will tell you that 2% is the number that we should be achieving. We don't even get to the 2%, so we don't have any excess surplus that we can actually fund capital reserve each year.
Ms. Beezer, thank you for the statement around a healthy direction for nurtured heart in those areas. We have had a nice number of parents who have volunteered to help us with this effort. If you'd like to participate with us in committee, we'd love to have you to help us inform this process. With regard to the CO2 and communicating to teachers and principals, absolutely, we plan to begin to give very specific guidance, beginning tomorrow, with what we're going to do. That will include, of course, our building walkthroughs and really learning about the first-floor classrooms, the windows, et cetera. With regard to winter MAP, yes, we're looking at listening and implementing what we're hearing. So that was a first step. We also made some significant adjustments to next year's assessment calendar. We moved assessments out of September, made sure that they were spread out. We've eliminated some testing where we felt that there was double, and we had the information that we needed. I'm probably a little early in what I'm going to say, but because you brought up honors testing, we will be making a presentation to the board coming up, because we have, at parent suggestion, analyzed the MAP data, along with the honors testing data, along with the park data. We don't feel the need to administer additional honors testing, because the MAP and the park provided the exact same thing. I think we were at a differential of maybe six students across the entire honors program, that's very solid data. This would apply to math, ELA, and social studies. Science, not so much, we have to find something else, because we don't have something in District for Science. What might that look like? So here's a precursor to the presentation. It might look like if students have a B in the honors program, they stay. It might look like if students already meet the criteria with MAP and with PARK, there's no need for them to test in honors. And if a parent would like to appeal, then we could appeal by taking the honors test. But if we follow that protocol, which we've already analyzed all of the data, the majority, large majority, in the 90th percentile majority, of the students would replace into honors, and therefore, that testing, we think at this point, is not necessary, it's over and above, and we can eliminate it. For new students coming into the district, or coming into the honors program, again, if they're already meeting MAP and/or PARK, then there's no need to test them. They can just enter into the program, as long as they have a grade of an A, and teacher recommendations. So those will be amongst the honors recommendations that we will be making. We just wanted to reach out to a few more parents to get their input, they've been very helpful to give us some input into this process. All of the supervisors and directors of these content areas have met to really pour over the data to make sure that it's an accurate read, and that there's a direct correlation between the growth data that we have and the honors placement data. We've met with all of our school leaders regarding the topic as well, our principals. Right now, we have agreement across the board. Again, the only area that we'd have to really look at is science. So we will reach out to our parents, we will then present to the board, we will present the data so that you could see the correlation that we're seeing, and if that's the case, then I think we should have a nice transition into honors without all of this additional testing. And if anybody wants to test, we can give you the honors test and watch it line up. Ms. Pepe Martos, ICE, this is in the budget for next year. It's in the budget for next year to extend the retaining wall, and so we're definitely considering, not considering, we're acting upon that as a need. Ms. Duarte, schools from ice droppings, I'm itching, and so that's not to say that I'm going to take that lightly, we're going to need to do something and find out what's happening. What are the kids experiencing, what are the staff experiencing, and make sure we're addressing it in addition to the weather stripping, the caulking, and all of those other things, and Mr. Salinas really doing a deep cleaning of our buildings, if that's the need. So, we will look into it, and I'll give you an update at our next meeting.
Alright, I'll be the first to say yay, it's really good news about honors testing, and preemptive on that one. And, board members, anything?
Yes. Facilities are extremely important, and I have asked Mrs. Mendez for permission to visit the buildings, because I'd like to see with my own eyes. Mice, do we have a contract with an exterminator?
We don't.
And do they come in on a monthly basis?
They do.
Okay, so that's important to know, but it seems like it's not working.
Right.
So, we may need to talk to the exterminator. Mice are not good. I would be the first one on the table.
As would I. Same here.
Could we buy some?
So, I think I lost my train of thought. But extremely important is facilities, and that we are maintaining them, and that they are clean. That's extremely important. With the number of students, staff that we have in the building, cleanliness is very important. So, thank you.
I'm sure my colleagues join me. I'm really excited about having less testing as well. As long as we have enough data to inform our decisions, I'm fine. But that's really good news, so thank you for that. Ms. Pepe Martos, I was on the board when you came to talk about the ice and the retaining wall and everything Mount Pleasant. So, it's upsetting that you're back here again, but happy to hear that it will be addressed this year. What else did I have? I know this predates you, Mr. Calavano, Ms. Mendez, but I would like an auditing of our debt, the $6 million that's left that we pay a little bit of every year in our budget. In that debt was the building of Liberty Middle School, renovations to Edison, and HVAC. So I want to know exactly what HVAC is in that loan that's not in this list. That's why I said I'm surprised that anything's over 40 years. So, that's where that debt supposedly went, so I would like an auditing of exactly what happened with that loan. Thank you.
My, my. First, I, Ms. Mendez, I am ecstatic about the reduced amount of testing. Totally happy with that. And the ability to eliminate the honors test in most cases. We still need, though, to do sessions with parents, where, one, we do an overview on understanding the MAP test, because having something that most parents don't understand, it's still going to feel to many people like a lack of transparency about the tool that we're using to make big decisions. Number two, I think that as part of teachers meeting with their, with parents, about, you know, having the individual meetings, they, there should be an opportunity for teachers to also review their child's MAP testing with the parents. So what does it mean for your child? What does it mean in general? How does this work? And then how does this apply to your child? Also, I'm glad we're continuing. I'd actually written the original resolution to make the changes, so I'm glad we're continuing that if you have a B, you're in, you don't have to test, that's great. But I am concerned that there are a couple of things that we had promised that we had not followed up on. One of them may not be necessary. We had promised in the original resolution, those approved last January, that we would provide practice test for kids. Instead, we provided only three questions that did not represent most of the questions on the test, and we didn't provide a practice writing sample. So, they didn't really get anything that could help them prepare. Number two, we had promised to provide the teacher's rating skill for parents regardless of what the child's test score was, so that they could see how that teacher rated their child, and be able to use that for, to, for constructive dialogue, as well as potentially for, as part of any appeal. So I think those things are critical. Oh, and, and I, you know, I know that you're doing many, many things all at the same time. We had also discussed what will happen in terms of looking at K-8 grading rubrics, so that grades, so that teachers, parents, everybody can feel confident in using grades as a, we didn't, we did change how grades were weighted in the honors equation and gave grades much more weight. However, if grades are a reliable indicator of a child's achievement, and we had an actual grading rubric, K-8, like we do at the high school, and you were a leader of that, along with Mr. Moore and the supervisors, and it's a beautiful rubric, everybody loves it, everybody feels like it's fair and it's clear, but developing a K-8 grading rubric is still key. And also, within that, ensuring that the role of homework is clearly defined, so our kids aren't being bombarded with, you know, three to five hours a night, and they can actually have a life and do other things in middle school, particularly at Edison. Those are some things that are all interconnected with the honors, the overall honor spectrum.
I just want to, may I?
Yeah.
Address?
Of course.
The MAP test. So, yes, understanding the MAP test for teachers and for parents is a part of the action plan, and so then we will begin to roll out our professional development and our teacher night, parent nights, to really understand MAP. I think it's a great idea to have teachers review MAP with parents, so we can also take a look at that. Agreed with practice tests and rating scales that that might not be necessary now, if we're not going to do honors testing. With the response to the grading profile, we've done the high school, we've met with all of the middle school leaders, we've reviewed their grading profiles, and we're ready to align the middle school as now, this, you know, moving into September. So we're done middle school, then the next phase will be elementary. So next year, you can expect six through eight grading profiles, and then they're just working out some final, right, and bringing it back to their teachers for feedback. It will align itself to the high school model, and then again, year three will be elementary. So we can plan for a future update to the board, maybe by March. We can talk about grading profiles, so that in February, we can talk about honors.
Awesome. That is wonderful. Great news. Thank you.
As we're looking and talking about assessment, I think at some point, we need to address the catch-22 with the students and the park. That's a hot topic right now. The decision that has come down, and how that's going to affect our students, I think that students and parents need to know that sooner rather than later.
Okay.
That's a part of the postcard writing campaign.
Yeah.
Yes.
That one bill got delayed, it's going to go to committee, I think. There's talk that if that does end up passing, there's going to be, there's going to need to be another bill. I've been talking to John McKean's aide on this. So, knees bent, we're going to have to figure that out as it comes.
Yep.
Alright. Next up, yep, we're going to need a motion to go back to executive session. We may come back here to take action, we will have a report on whether or not we're doing that in about 30 minutes or so?
Yep, I'll make a motion.
So that anybody still here can go home. Can we have a second?
I'll second it.
Alright.
Executive session is number four from the original resolution.
Right.
To the number four.
It's on the agenda.